I was being ignored.
On behalf of the commission, we appreciate folks being with us here this afternoon. As folks, I think, know, we try to have our teams in the morning. But this morning, all of us commissioners were in other meetings having to do with an organization called the Multi-County Juvenile Detention Center. And that's a district that is comprised of Lincoln County, Perry County, Hocking County, Fairfield, where we work together to have a safe place for youth who may be a danger to themselves or others and may need to be in that facility for a little while. I'm mentioning that meeting because during those meetings that we were in at that center today, we were fortunate enough to see a presentation of kind of a new direction, I guess, that they've been going in the last few months in terms of what they're doing with youth in that facility. It was so powerful and moving that we immediately invited them to one of our meetings to share that new direction that they're going with, trying to help some juveniles in our community that have gotten on a, you know, a little bit of a tough path. As I kind of joke sometimes, sometimes not joke, but through the good graces of a juvenile judge in my youth, I might have been in such a facility. But he recommended some other less aggressive measures to try to straighten me out without sending me to juvie. So it, all that has kind of a special place with me. And I know my colleagues were possibly moved today, too. I mean, it was just a real stunner. Never been prouder of being a part of the MCJDC than I was this morning, which happened to also include some wonderful agreements that were made on fiscal issues associated with how the facility is operated and the financing, all to the benefit of Fairfield County in the final analysis. So shout out to Dr. Brown, Judge Vanderboort, my colleagues, Sonny Cordell. A real team effort to get to a better place in terms of the fiscal side of that operation. But then also just incredibly moved by the new direction they're going. And I look forward to a near term opportunity for us all to hear more about that and hope that you might have as moved as I was. The first item on our agenda today is a brief. Did I get that word right?
Yes, you did.
Thank you. Budget update from Bart Hampson. As Bart's preparing to deliver his remarks, I think it's sometimes it maybe gets lost in the moment to understand the primary responsibility of a county commissioner is to make decisions on revenue and expenses for funding the operations, $200 million operations of county governments and agencies. And we strive very hard to retain our focus on that primary responsibility while we're walking and chewing gum at the same time on multiple different issues. But with that, Bart, on the most important thing that county commissioners do, how are we doing?
I think we're doing pretty good.
How about you, Mark?
Well, you look at our overall performance over the years, thanks to people before me, people that I'm working with today. Everybody's working towards the same thing, and that's keeping us stable throughout any changes that we may come across during our time here. All right, so I'll jump into the first quarter updates first. Again, thank you for giving me an opportunity to present today. I also want to take an opportunity to thank my staff, especially Stacy Nysley, who go above and beyond at times to ensure that everything is done properly, everything is done on time. And I just want to make sure I threw that thank you out to all of them. I'd also like to thank my elected officials and departmental heads as we have met the last month or so and gone through the 2024 budgets and started those conversations as we prepare for the budgets for this year. As I said, now move on to the 2023 first quarter results. So this presentation will be focused on the general fund revenue and expenses for the first quarter of 2023. We'll talk about sales tax, and we'll also talk about our financial analysis reporting that we're working on currently today. After that, we'll be talking about 2024 budgets and the parameters and the conversations we've been having throughout this last month, and I'll open up to questions after that. Before we discuss the revenue results, I'm going to give an explanation of the revenue categories that we're talking about in this presentation. This chart was created for everyone to see that what's included in these revenue categories. We currently have over 80 separate revenue line items that have been summarized into 10 different categories within the general fund. We will first discuss the first quarter revenue results. Total revenues came in at $3.1 million higher than the same period as last year during the first quarter. Increases were a result of property tax revenue being up $1.5 million. Investment earnings were also up $1.3 million. Just to reference, last year's investment revenue at this time was only $197,000 compared to that $1.5 million. I want to thank the Investment Advisory Committee and all that and all who attended those investment meetings for the leadership and foresight to react quickly to our environment. I just wanted to give the treasurer an opportunity if he wanted to say something about the work that's gone into his investment revenue.
Quickly, we have seen just been a roller coaster ride as far as what happened to interest rates first quarter of 2020 during the pandemic to how they basically skyrocketed, if you will, from middle of last year to the present. So with that, that's been the reason that we've been able to go from $200,000 to over $1.5 million in interest income. And we expect to see a very strong remainder of the year.
Thank you. Commissioners, do they want to comment?
No, I appreciate the work of the IAC and the results.
Also, within the first quarter of 2023, our sales tax was also up about near around $400,000. Casino revenues also continue to come in strong and was slightly higher than the previous year of 2022. January through May casino revenues continue to slightly outpace our projections both year over year and current budget. Several small revenue line items have also increased, totaling around $208,000. We did see some revenue decreases in the first quarter. Conveyance fees were down about $128,000. Fees for services were also down $122,000. And title surplus transfers were also slightly down in the first quarter. Our 2023 first quarter results as a percentage of total revenue by category shows that sales tax came in at 37% and property taxes came in 35% of the total estimated revenues. One notable highlight here is the investment earnings increasing from 1% in the previous year to 7% this year. Moving on to revenue highlights, our 2023 total revenue came in at $21.3 million versus prior year of $18.3 million. That equates to about $3.1 million higher than the previous year. As we talked about earlier, property taxes, investment earnings and sales tax, all up for the first quarter of this year. Casino, home state rule back jail rental income and local government were also up. That was the $208,000 we discussed earlier. And again, conveyance fees, fees for charges for services and title surplus transfers were all down in the first quarter. As we move on to discuss sales tax, we can see that Fairfield County continues to have one of the lowest sales tax in Ohio. Out of the 88 counties, 78% of the counties are higher than Fairfield County, while 17% remain the same at the 6.75%. And only 5% or 4 counties have a lower sales tax. Our estimated sales tax continues to come in strong for the first quarter of 2023 at 4.9% higher than the first quarter of 2022. As you can see by our chart, we are continuing to stay conservative and align with the auditor and our projections. All of us are monitoring and analyzing our current financial environment and will analyze and adjust as more information becomes available.
Bart, on that chart, just so everybody's clear, when you get to the end of that graph on the right hand side, you see the downturn, and that's based on projections, not based on actual results, correct?
That is correct.
And if balance of the year, for example, were to mirror the beginning of the year, then the actual would also continue to go up as opposed to that slight downturn that you show on projection, correct?
That is correct.
And that downturn was meant to reflect an anticipated recession, correct?
That is correct.
Please continue.
Now we'll move on to the expenses for the first quarter of 2023. This slide represents the expense categories. We currently have over 600 different expense line items that have been categorized into seven different categories within the general fund. Our 2023 year-over-year expenses increased 5.6%, or roughly $900,000. We have two main reasons that are driving expenses in the first quarter. Contract services increased about $744,000 and capital outlay increased $415,000 in the first quarter. Contract services were driven by allocations that increased $266,000. With one notable thing here is our investment in our transportation programs. Board of Elections also had increases, but it was a timing issue based on the first quarter. And IT costs also increased $146,000 as a result of investments in the telephone service upgrades that are happening within this first quarter of 2023. Lastly, our municipal court payroll reimbursements were also up this year. But again, it was a timing issue, one thing for hitting, not necessarily an increase in cost. Capital outlay increases were also driven up by the purchase of computer hardware associated with a service cluster infrastructure project of around $330,000. Dan, do you want to provide an explanation of what that expense is?
So it is replacing hardware that's in existence in the state county currently, and that hardware is definitely in the end of life timeframe. It's a project that we've been planning, scoping since third quarter 2021. And, you know, now we're really starting to get rolling with the hardware and seeing the progression.
Thank you, Dan. The other larger increase that we have in there related to our vehicle purchases. We had some work done with our public service vehicles, and that was higher this year than last year. In fact, we didn't have any expenses last year, so it's a timing thing of things hitting this year, not necessarily overrunning expenses just when they're hitting. Lastly, we do have some year-over-year offsets based upon the lower expense transfers, based on lower expense transfers that I will explain later on in this presentation. This next chart represents the 2023 first quarter results as a percentage of expense categories. Personnel services continues to be our largest overall expense, coming in at 28.1% versus 28.4% of the previous quarter of 2022. Our first quarter expense highlights include increases in contract services investments and the capital related to projects in 2023. I stated earlier, I'm going to talk about the offset of the expenses. These offsets will be resolved, some debts being paid off in 2022, which lowered the debt transfers and helped offset the quarterly increases in 2023. Two of those notable items were the detention center and leverage center being paid. This next slide represents our continued focus on our financial analysis and reporting. By streamlining my original project, I was able to reduce the data management by half in the first quarter of this year. In other words, the time it takes to manage all this stuff was reduced by half. This has increased my speed in turning around data and improving my analysis capabilities. I also combined historical, current year, and projected data into one module. Where before there were three different modules that we were managing, now it's one module. This has reduced the duplication effort and also improved error rates. The first quarter, we also started a financial reporting group that is focused on our current fiscal reports while looking for more comprehensive approaches to our financial reporting. Our goal is to reduce risk to the county and knowledge transfer and the speed to competency as we face retirements and turnovers in the future. Lastly, I have been expanding this model to other non-general fund reports, ERP, infrastructure, as I look to expand that in the future. Our last slide represents our communication on the 2024 budget process. Not much has changed in the budget parameters. However, one area that we are continuing to monitor is our healthcare costs. Jeff, do you want to provide us an update on what's been happening and occurring throughout 2023?
Right now, with the first quarter complete with our health insurance, we have determined that it's probably the highest increase in claims cost that we've seen since we've been self-funded. One month, we overran costs by approximately $750,000. We will be looking and monitoring for the rest of the year as to where we will need to be with any increase to health insurance costs or any plan design changes. So we can anticipate that there will be likely changes.
Thank you. Lastly, over the last month, we have met with almost every department. And I want to thank everybody for their time and continued cooperation as we begin the 2024 budget process.
Bart, on behalf of the commissioners, we really just want to thank you and tell you we think you're doing a good job and we appreciate the analysis. As folks may or may not know, I mean, I think Commissioner Fix has gotten in the habit of opening detailed reports on a monthly basis. I'm still kind of stuck in my quarterly habit. I know Commissioner Levesey is nearly constantly curious and interested in terms of some of the decisions we make and how they impact these things. Maybe helpful for folks that are hearing this stuff, you hear something like, you know, $750,000 overage in a month on health insurance, which is bad news, no question about it. But as a result of some prior decisions that we've made, that fund is incredibly healthy and can handle that kind of a problem. Although we would want to monitor that and avoid that situation point forward. You know, as far as the two points goes, I'm, you know, we're certainly going to defer significantly to Deputy County Administrator Porter on that issue. But I want you to know that we're salt and peppered, so we understand that that number may change.
I would also like to thank all of you. I mean, throughout this last year, I've been working on things, working things out, and it's taken some time, and I appreciate your patience and your expertise as well. I'm trying to develop things and providing your input in those changes, so thank you.
Commissioner Levesey, questions or comments for Mr. Hampson?
I have a question, just a comment. Bart, when you don't have any questions, that means you presented well, and you presented well, so therefore I have no questions.
Commissioner Fix?
Yeah, just wanted to thank Bart. So there's a specific tool that I've asked him to create that helps me see where we are each month as we go through the year and how the year is going to end up and where we're falling short and where we're ahead. And Bart's been very gracious in working with me on that and really helps me see things in the way that I need to see them, which is probably different than a lot of folks, but really helps me understand what's going on, so I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
County Administrator Cordell?
Well, thank Bart. I know you and Stacy have been out meeting with folks. It's kind of a pre-budget meeting process. I know that's taken a lot of time and effort and energy, so. And I know you've gotten great feedback from folks on that, so thank you for your dedication to that. And I think that'll help ensure an even smoother budget season for everybody.
Thank you.
So Dr. Brown, I can't help but think of you. I feel like you're the matriarch, if you will, of this level of budgeting, analysis and preparation and forecasting. And I just wondered if you had any comments or strong thoughts that you would like to share?
Well, you know, I have taken a look at your modeling for the budgeting. It's a very sophisticated tool. It's a much more sophisticated tool that will give a lot more granular detail, and so I appreciate its sophistication.
Thank you.
Bart, any concluding thoughts there?
No, I'm continuing to see how this year goes. I'm optimistic, which for a fiscal guy is not always the easiest thing. But I am optimistic and, you know, looking forward to see what's going to happen this year.
All right, well, I'm not optimistic, so maybe somewhat. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
At this time, the commission sets aside an opportunity for voters and taxpayers to address the commission. If you would like to do so, may it come to the podium near and begin by stating your name and residential address. And we do have a three-minute rule, which we would appreciate your courtesy on. If I ask you to conclude your remarks, please do so.
Hello. My name is Scott Barr. I'm a seventh generation residence, the family farm in Amanda Township, Fairfield County. I'm a teacher at High Christian University. I just finished classes last week. Typically, I had 50 minutes of mesmerized attention of my freshman composition students, but I'll try to keep it within three minutes here. I also represent, I'm standing here for myself. I'm also representing the Protect Amanda Township Citizens Action Group, which is concerned about the development of solar industrial development in Fairfield County. Some of our friends from the Citizens for Fairfield's up in Walnut Township are here also. I'd like to take a stand today for our agricultural lands. There's a lot of different issues, as you know, because you've been batting this around for months. There's a lot of different issues, but the one that makes the signs, the yard signs, is that we don't want industrial development on prime farmland. And so I'd like to take a stand for our agricultural lands along with our settled residential communities. I'd like to take a stand for smart solar and energy development. But I'd like to take a stand against naive, destructive industrial development that can hurt our farmlands. I came across in my thickening file on the solar issue an article that was published in the Ohio Country Journal last June. And I supplied the commissioners with a copy of that. And in that article, the article was called "Report Highlights: Smarter Land Use Planning to Protect Agriculture." And when I saw this, it got my attention because I'm also concerned about the regional planning commission and the land use initiative that's underway at the current time. In this article, they talk about a report that was issued by the American Farmland Trust called Farms Under Threat 2040: Choosing an Abundant Future. And you have the article there to read. I wanted on the second page, though, to read one quote from their president, John Piatti, who said, "Agricultural lands in the United States grow an astounding array of food, fiber, biofuels, and other raw materials. This abundance has made the United States one of the most food-secure nations in the world. Yet it can also mask vulnerabilities. For too many Americans, it's easy to brush off farmland loss or view it as inevitable. This puts our future at risk. We need farmland not just to feed a growing population, but to provide essential ecological services that nurture wildlife, cleanse water, and capture atmospheric carbon. If we remain on our current development path, we will ultimately run out of land to grow our food. But long before that, I fear we will run out of the farmland we need to heal an environmentally degraded planet."
Please conclude your remarks, sir.
Okay, I'll reference there that they have several points here that local government can put into action in order to protect farmland, including some points about smart solar. So thank you very much and appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Melissa Hoover, 7710 Cattail Road, Pleasantville. When you purchase any real property in Ohio, you can expect there to be a certain limitations placed on the property by the local township, municipality, or even a homeowner's association. These rules were put in place to assure property values cannot be degraded by that neighbor who refuses to mow his lawn or wants to put a car on blocks in the front yard. Sometimes the rules are to assure safety for the community by requiring a fence around a swimming pool or being sure to place buildings far enough from the property lines or roadway to allow for vehicles to have a clear line of sight. It is so common to live by these rules that we expect them. In Walnut Township, we have zoning, a set of rules that regulate what can be built where. If you buy land in our township, you will not be surprised to find that there are zoning rules that you must abide by. Walnut Township has areas zoned industrial. In an industrial area, 9.14 I-2 of the Walnut Township zoning resolution states, "Any manufacturing, processing, cleaning, servicing, testing, or repairs of the following materials, goods, or products, when such uses will not be materially injurious to the occupants of adjacent premises or the community at large, and where the emission or creation of noise, vibration, smoke, dust, or other particular matter-toxic and noxious materials, odors, fire, and explosive hazards, glare, or heat, or electromagnetic disturbances will be minimized as much as possible." Further, 9.14 I-2 states in A intent, "It is the intent of the I-2 district to provide areas for general industrial and warehousing uses free from the encroachment of residential retail and industrial," I'm sorry, institutional uses. The land lease for the industrial solar projects is zoned rural residential. 92A intent states, "It is the intent of the RR Rural Residential District to provide for single-family dwellings on large tracts within areas of open land." The landowners and solar developers are violating our township zoning. Certainly, if we are not allowed to build a home in an area zoned for industry, how is it that industry is able to build around our homes in an area zoned rural residential? And by doing so, they avoid the requirement to not be materially injurious to the occupants of the adjacent premises or the community at large, et cetera. We are the community at large. If these projects are allowed to be constructed on the prime farmland surrounding our homes, then we have no zoning. So the property rights argument for why these landowners should be allowed to proceed is not valid in Walnut Township. Property rights does not give anyone the right to do something detrimental to their neighbor nor their neighbor's property. So it does not give the 11 people who leased their land rights and remove the rights of those who own the 86 parcels who share fence rows with them. The defense of property rights argument is property rights.
Please conclude your remarks.
Those of us who live and farm in rural residential areas of Walnut Township have a right to expect our neighborhood to remain rural residential, and the Walnut Township zoning resolution states it clearly. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you very much.
Good night, toys.
My name is Ray Steen, 2444 West Point Road, Lancaster, Ohio. Yesterday, I was listening to a farmer out in South Dakota and two representatives from South Dakota. They are being pushed They are being pushed by this capturing of carbon dioxide by the government very harshly. In fact, they've been told if they don't give us the right, we'll take it by eminent domain. This is also what Melissa was talking about, too. And the farmer said, he's directly affected with this. And if you don't think it's coming to your state, you're wrong, because it's already been set in motion. And it's already part of, whether you know it or not, these solar farms. That is affecting this program. And it's against the rules of the people out there in that state, but they seem to take it over from the, administration that we now have in the White House in Washington, DC. Your individual property rights, property rights have no meaning. You are not a person, you're just an object. And we are not. We are a people, we're gonna rise up and be heard. And because of this, I believe that we need lots of prayers and guidance from a higher being, our Father in heaven and His Son, Jesus Christ. So I'm going to pray. Lord, give us the insight and the knowledge that we need to follow Your Word in the Bible. And help us, Lord, to be a free people, a free people to be able to speak and do and own property and be the person that You would want us to be. And we pray this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Good morning. I'm Judy. Parker made the point that we are dealing with satanic forces and even ended his speech with a request for each citizen to pray, to pray for 10 minutes for America. You know, there's no county, there's a country, there's no nation, and there's no county that has survived after they have turned their back on God and His Word and the need for prayer. My question is, just how do you three commissioners come to the conclusions that you can make great right decisions without prayer? This truly gives the impression to we, the people, that you esteem yourselves to be better than God. There's so much Satanism that is being promoted, that Satanism is evil, that Satanism is evil and desires to destroy our Constitution, our freedoms in the Bill of Rights. And we, the people, have to ask each one of you, just what are your actions and your decisions doing to promote and preserve the Constitution? Also, I have to ask, just where do you think all the grant money that you so willingly spend comes from? What have you three done to help the farmers? Instead of taxing them, just how interested are you in the farmer's welfare? In fact, just how interested are you in hearing and listening to what the common unelected citizen has to say? You say you can't change things, that we have to go to the higher powers. But that proves to us that you either don't know or care about or obey the Constitution. Perhaps a combination of all three. Also, we, the people, are not fooled by the way in which you get elected and stay in office. We do need paper ballots. I was not able to print out things that I wanted to, but one of the main headlines this week and last week is that Texas Attorney General Paxton is starting a COVID investigation and could stick it to Big Pharma. Madonna chief executive made $400 million on this thing. Pfizer made $33 million, just one man. This was truly big business and big bucks for Big Pharma at expense of America's good health. Another one was Pfizer and FDA aggressively pushed COVID on pregnant women despite knowing the shot caused dire fetal and infant risks, and they knew this in 20. While researchers investigate thousands of reports of post-COVID jab, tinnitus, the CDC says, "There's no evidence." There's so many lies that have been promoted. And again, we need truth. Only truth is going to set us free, and we need God. We need God's help.
Good afternoon. My name is Frank Wu. I'm the 4595 Christmas Rock Room, Fairfield County. I'm a business representative of a week team of engineers. And the solar project, like, Eastern Cotton Town, we are a favorite of that as it were the work for our members, the Labor Local Members and IEDW. And I'm not gonna follow this to the T, but I've done a lot of research. I'm dealing with a lot of solar companies now. I saw the projects kicking off, one in Pickle County, Atlanta Solar Project. There's a lot of misconception, as in disrupting a field drainage. They went out and extensively mapped out all the field drainage. There's only two sections that were not favored, so they revalued it and made it favorable. Out there, they just made roadways and are hardly leaving any soils. Soil erosion control was being done greatly, and everything's direct growing piling. They tried to use an out-of-state contractor to do that, while they end up using trained opera engineers and trained laborers to do the piling because they're increasing production. And they are trained at our training centers on how to do it properly. So, in closing, they're going to actually use less herbicides, pesticides, and fertilizers on the ground. You plant just native grasses, pollinator-friendly stuff. And after 25 years, 30 years of their contract is, according to what they're telling me on that project, if those farmers want to go back to farming, they are going to actually remove everything completely. And by not using any sprays whatsoever, then they'll have organic, organic farmland back because nothing was used inorganically on the project. Thank you.
My name is Paris Walker. I live at 5543 Town Hill Drive, Canal Winchester, Ohio. Good afternoon, and thanks for allowing me to join you today to share some of the efforts underway in the county as it relates to economic development. I know that you've heard from a few folks in the building trades as it relates to the utility-scale solar, including from a colleague of mine, so I'll be brief. As a representative of Labor's Local 423 Labor Union, I want to personally express the importance of having good-paying jobs in our region and working with the company who has made a commitment to us. We are thrilled that EDF has chosen Labor's District Council of Ohio as a partner of the Eastern Cotton Town Solar Project. And we will guarantee that our skilled men and women will build a best-in-class project that Fairfield County will be proud of. Ohio has retired or announced for retirement more coal-fired power plants than any other state in the union. Additionally, Ohio imports 20% to 25% of our energy from out-of-state resources. Energy transition is not a theoretical concept in Ohio. It is happening in real time, and solutions are needed. Ohio should embrace the opportunity to create homegrown energy while providing good-paying jobs with benefits and pensions. We are excited about the opportunity to build Eastern Cotton Town and be a part of building our energy future and creating a significant economic development project in Fairfield County. Thanks for your time today.
Good afternoon. Screw me off, not morning. My name is Francis Martin. I live at 9370 Cattail, within where this location of Eastern Cotton Town is going to be. One, I was gonna talk today, but since my fellow union members are here, I'm FOP, 32 years in the color of who's else.
If I might ask you.
Thank you. I just want to let them know.
No, and I appreciate that. I just, I don't think I mentioned it in the rule of explanation today, but all comments are to be directed to the commission, not to members of ARIS. And I don't mean to be harsh with you.
That's okay. I'm sorry.
Please continue.
All is, all I was gonna say is, I'm wanting their jobs. I'm for them. I guess it all comes down to being a politician. Compromise. Location, location, location. This commission is trying to develop this county. We know where it's developing. Land usage. Big topic. There are better things to use with that land, even if it just stays farmland in a solar field. There are many places in Fairfield County where union numbers could have jobs not far away and make their money, have their jobs, and be happy, just like I am as a resident of Fairfield County for the last 29 years and plan on still being a resident inside that solar panel field. Thank you. No problem, sir.
Comes happening.
About my business. Hello. Stephanie Taylor, Cattail, pretty many, southeast Ohio. I just wanted to say thank you to the folks that are coming out Saturday because I won't be there personally, so not Monty and a few others, Cory and the county John, on the Build Side Out in Pleasantville. I think you guys might actually be doing trusses again, so I apologize, I won't be there to join you in that fun. But we know that you guys will have a great time, and we're looking forward to that. I also want to let anybody know, for the females in the room, there's a lot of us, but we will be doing some Women Build Days, too, coming up on that build. And we'd love to see you guys out there to get a free "I Am a Woman Builder" t-shirt, which is pretty cool to rock around this county, so people can be like, heck, yeah, you are. Yes, I will get you one, absolutely, for being out on the build multiple times, for sure. And you're bringing some friends, right? So, thank you very much for what you guys do. And, you know, Rick, we had a great event last weekend, two weekends ago, I'm sorry, for the wall build. That's why you were at the stage you were at, because we were able to build all the walls and the workforce in there a couple of weekends ago, so that's good news. Yes, so thank you again for your support and what you guys are doing and getting involved with us in multiple ways. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address the commission at this time?
Sherri Pymer, 3464 South Bank Road, Millersport. We're actually in Walnut Township and not in the village. We have farmland across a street from one of our properties in Walnut Township. And we have farmland across the road from where we live. Both properties have been approached by another solar company. I had a long discussion today with a developer who owns the farmland across from us, one of them. And he is not for putting solar projects on his property. And he said, "I wouldn't even go buy a farm in order to put a project on my property." However, you know, whatever other people do, that's, you know, up to them. But I agree with Misty and the zoning. I can't do whatever I want on our property without going through zoning. Saturday, we had a public meeting. It was an open meeting in Millersport for people to, you know, learn more about what's going on with the solar projects around. And there were some people there from the Yellow Bud Project. These people gave up part of their farmland for the Yellow Bud Project. And they are living now with deep regret. And they said they have to live the rest of their lives knowing what they did with their property and what they did to their neighbors. And it's a mess. And it's just, it's something that the county needs to take a look at. Putting in exclusionary zones, okay? Industrial, zone industrial. Put the solar projects there for the, this is for the 50 and above megawatt industrial solar. You cannot believe what the solar companies are telling you. That's evidenced by, when I went to Madison County, I spoke with residents there of what the solar companies told them that is not happening. They are not telling them the truth. And I know we've got some guys here from the unions. Years ago, we were members of Local 423 when we owned our business before we retired. So I understand, jobs, jobs, jobs. But they're also bringing people in from out of state, working with them, but bringing them in from out of state. So it's not just local people working for local people. So just keep that in mind also. And with all the construction that's going on with Intel and then additional businesses that will be produced because of Intel, there will be plenty of jobs around this area for a long time. We're gonna have to, and Commissioner Fix is, you know, working along with the rest of you on a development plan, excuse me, for Fairfield County. We're gonna need homes. We're gonna need businesses. I had a long talk with a developer today that said, "Hey, we don't have the infrastructure. I'm a developer, and we're not gonna have people coming in from Intel wanting to come into Fairfield County." And I said, "Yeah, we are. They're working on a plan now, but even though it may be several years down the road, we're gonna have to make that plan and make a good plan and not take up good farmland with solar projects." And he also agreed with the fact that technology is such that a few years from now, those solar panels are gonna be obsolete. I mean, it's already proven now that they're coming up with new technology now that will replace those. So why take up thousands and thousands of acres of farmland when we have power here in Ohio? The coal plants were only forced by the federal government to close. So we can be energy-independent in Ohio without solar. They can increase the gas production with very little effort and take the place of all the solar in Ohio. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address the commission at this time?
Very none. On behalf of the commission, we do thank you all for coming. Again, I apologize to you. I do want people to understand why we have rules and what we're trying to do. I don't know if you all have been to meetings where there was no rule or control and one person shouts over to another person, another person shouts back, and then, you know, things kind of get off and run in that direction. Certainly try to avoid those things here. We want you all to feel safe and comfortable in an environment where you can speak your mind and give your opinions, and frankly, even tell lies. You're allowed to do that at this podium. For example, there is probably not anyone who's more religious in this room than my colleague, Commissioner Levy, who won't even break bread without thanking the Lord and Savior. So, you know, but we let people say these things, and we do it nicely, and we're gonna continue to do that. Now, there's also, I've suggested today that we don't know the Constitution or we don't follow it. No one has been trained more than me by conservative thinkers in the history and originality of the Constitution, but people can... the constitution, but people can come up there and lie and say whatever they want about it, and we'll smile and thank them for their comments. We do want to hear from you all, but it's within a context and within a framework that is designed for your safety and comfort and so that you can feel comfortable in coming before us. We thank you all very much for being here. Steven, anything on legal?
Money, cool.
All right, American Rescue Plan update from the thirty point six received. Twenty-three point seven has been appropriated, twelve point nine extended, and four point five incurred or obligated. Treasurer Sprague visited the OSU Extension Program, Real World, Real Money, and our own Bennett Nieswanger was there to share his program experiences. So that's a program that's aimed at junior high students to kind of teach them the value of money, what things cost, give them that, that idea of what it's like out in the real world, and I participated at Thomas Ewing before. Forget where you were at when you did it, Bennett.
Yeah, so thank you, honey. This is my second year of doing it. I was at Rushmore Middle last week, last year I went to Amanda, and you know, whenever you're dealing with middle school students, kind of think to yourself, they're probably going to be super excited to be here and not really going to want to listen to what you say, but myself and everybody else who was there, I even got to speak to Treasurer Sprague for a little bit. He said the same thing, but they were incredibly responsive, very attentive, and I think it's just really great program. That's something I wish I had available to me when I was their age. I hope that they see the value in it, and I think they did, but it was awesome of Treasurer Sprague to come out.
Yeah, it's kind of like, it's a day in the life. You get some money, you got to pay childcare, you got to pay your bills, pay, pay your housing expenses, so it's a, it's a neat experience for those students and does teach them some, some real world money management experiences. So we appreciate our OSU Extension for their work on that. We also had a township trustee meeting this past week at the Record Center. We had a number of county leadership, including Commissioner Fix and Commissioner Levy attending as well, trying to help share information about growth and development in the county. Commissioner Levy or Fix, you want to add anything to that?
I was unable to attend, so.
All right.
Commissioner Fix did all the heavy lifting.
So actually, our team did. Thanks to Rick and Tony and Jeremiah Up who did the bulk of the presentation. It's a continuing conversation with township leaders, talking about, you know, kind of the paradigm shift that we're working through from, you know, no development is, is good to really well-planned development is even better. And so we're, we're continuing to take them through that process and provide as much information as we can with the ultimate goal of, you know, sometime this fall, having a really solid toolbox put together that they can use that include that land use plan that we're in the midst of working on and, you know, updating our codes and regulations, our transportation plan, our utility plan, you know, all the things that go into smart development. We're working through those. So really impressed by the attendance. We had, almost every township was represented there, most of them with multiple trustees and other members of the township. A lot of folks in the audience asked good questions, so very positive meeting and appreciate the Township Association. Darren Monahan is the leader of that group, and he put that together, so it was good night.
And thanks to Dan and John for making sure the AV equipment was up and running for that event.
And Coach came and let us all in and let us all out. Yeah, bodyguard, right? Yeah. Yep.
County Leadership Conference, the annual event is taking place on May twenty-third from eight to noon and is held at the Liberty Center. This is an event that we encourage all supervisors, managers, and directors and elected officials within the county to attend, and thanks again to John for working to get some AV set up in that space, the Liberty Center, that will help us be able to do that in a really good manner. So thank you, John and Dan for pushing forward with, with that vendor. Highlights of resolutions, administrative approvals. Review packet contains a list of administrative approvals, and there are eight resolutions for the voting meeting today. Just a couple of highlight, we do have one allowing for proper accounting and appropriating funds into the Sheriff's Capital Outlay Fund for the reimbursement of mon, monies received by the general fund for a sheriff's vehicle that was declared total, totaled by Corsa. So this is a vehicle totaled. We get the money back from Corsa, putting it into the Sheriff's Capital Outlay so that he could purchase a replacement vehicle. And then lastly, a resolution authorizing facilities to purchase a twenty-twenty-two Dodge Ram van for the facilities department. Couple items of recognition, thank you to John Coaches for his quick work at the Liberty Center area when dealing with a cut fiber situation that was surrounding the, this work going on out there. Also, a shout out, Carrie Stone shared with us, she's a career navigator with the Workforce Center, that all fourteen of the phlebotomy students there took the exam and all passed. So very exciting news for all fourteen of those students and well on their way to securing a job, I'm sure, right, Rick?
Yeah, actually, we're working with the Fairfield Medical Center right now.
Very good. County Auditor Dr. Brown, thank GIS for quickly gathering parcel information associated with questions about the solar map. County Auditor Dr. Brown thanked the VOR team for how well the hearings are progressing and for examining new, efficient ways of doing business. They received thank you notes from VOR complainants expressing their appreciation for the professionalism and efficiency of the process. County Auditor Dr. Brown shared appreciation for the partnership with Soil and Water Conservation District, OSU Extension, and many other volunteers who are working on landscaping upgrades at one oh eight North High. The upgrades will have a community education aspect and will also make things easier to maintain from a facilities standpoint. County Auditor Dr. Brown thanked Jeff Porter and Bart Hampson for the quick response and guiding, guidance related to available ARP funding. County Auditor Dr. Brown thanked Becky Shade with the Fairfield County District Library for her presentation about their services. County Auditor Dr. Brown thanked the Finance Department for the quick support provided to Adam H. at the closing of the Venture Place property. And lastly, County Auditor Dr. Brown thanked the Payroll Department for working closely with Athens County to be of support to them at a time when they have multiple vacancies. Rochelle, calendar review invitations received, please.
On calendar review, today we have the Regional Planning Commission meeting at the Record Center that is at five thirty PM. Tomorrow is the Governor's Executive Workforce Board meeting at ten thirty at Scotts Miracle Grove in Marysville. The Commissioner Budget Process presenting to State SWCD staff is May fourth at eleven o'clock at the Ohio Department of Agriculture in Reynoldsburg. The Economic Development and Planning Next Strategic Plan Staff Update is May fourth at two PM at the Workforce Center. Law Enforcement Morial Service is May fifth, that's this week, at eleven AM in downtown Lancaster. There's a reminder to wear orange next Tuesday, May ninth, to raise awareness of the need and impact of supervised invitation. We have an invitation to the Commissioners from the Fairfield County Sheriff's Office for the twenty-twenty-two Annual Recognition Ceremony on May twenty-fifth at twelve o'clock. The Welder, the World Elder Abuse Awareness Day Event, where you should wear purple, is June fifteenth at eight o'clock at the Liberty Center. For correspondence, we have a press release from the Fairfield County Family, Adult, and Children First Council titled Fairfield County Family, Adult, and Children First Council Award Three Thousand for Paranatal Cluster Initiative. A memo from Dr. Carrie Brown, subjects population, personal income, per capita income, median household income, median age, educational attainment, unemployment rate, average sales price of residential property, and total assessed valuation statistics, summary of selected annual comprehensive financial report statistics. We also have a newsletter from the Auditor's Office titled Auditor's Ledger News for the County Auditor's Office. A report from the Prosecutor's Office, twenty-twenty-four Appropriations for Compensation of Elected Officials. A quarterly newsletter from the Fairfield County Health Department titled Health Matters. An announcement from the Fairfield County Health Department titled Board of Health Adds New Members, Elects Officers. County Auditor's Map of the Month titled Severe Weather Events in Fairfield County. Letters and emails from Fairfield County residents regarding solar energy. Letter from Pelotonia President Joe Atgar regarding annual Pelotonia event on August fifth. An informational flyer from OSU Extension regarding food preservation classes.
Thank you, Rochelle. I have one more shout out, a recognition, and Mr. Sabrak reminded me, thank you for your presentation at the Morpsey Rural Transportation Forum. Rick and I both got great feedback from everybody on your presentation and kind of sharing your experiences there on the transit front.
I did great.
Oh, seriousness, like the personal story that he shares really does make an impact on the table, saying how wonderful it is that a commissioner, you know, kind of seeing the need and also willing to share their perspective, and that, I don't see that everywhere. So, I appreciate it.
In all seriousness, I was thankful to be asked. Thank you.
Old Business, Commissioner Levy, anything under Old Business?
So, last Tuesday, I actually had to leave early, and thanks to Commissioner Davis and Fix for allowing me that trip, but I was able to go to, and actually have lunch with the First Lady and Governor Dewine and many others as they presented on Alec Pardon's Imagination Library. And you know what's so important about that is, and they put some statistics out there where children under five, by the time they're five, there are eighty percent of their brains developed, and some of the poorer kids, as compared to middle class and upper class, hear thirty million less words than their counterparts. And so consequently, many of them, and as Commissioner Fix has talked about, the poverty, how it recycles itself from one generation to the next, and some of these, some of these efforts can be a little part in trying to break that, that cycle, if you will. But I appreciate Carrie Woody and the United Way and all the hard work they're doing. We're about fifty-five percent right now, state board, they're about fifty percent. When, when First Lady, First Lady Fran Dewine took over, they were at eleven percent. But it's, it's an initiative that I think really has, has some good outcome. That's what I'm all about, you know? We, we go through life, try to do this and that, but at the end of the day, are you really making a difference? And I think this is making a difference in a broad way. So I'm very appreciative of being there and spent about a half hour talking to the Governor and First Ladies on a personal basis, so it was, it was great. I was happy to be there and appreciate the opportunity.
You really did it too. You sent me a picture of Fran Dewine with a forkful coming around, me sitting right, right next to her.
I had to do it when she wasn't watching.
Anything under Old Business?
Yeah, you mentioned earlier the Almody County Juvenile Detention Center. It was a good meeting today, and we did conclude, you know, a really strong agreement with the four counties. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank you, Commissioner Davis, for your work with Commissioner Bub to negotiate what is, I think, probably the, the most reasonable MCJDC contract we've had, certainly in my time here, but probably in a generation. And that comes from years of relationship building and years of thought leadership. So I just wanted to thank you for your efforts on that. Last night, I had the opportunity to attend a Amanda Village Council meeting, and, you know, it's always refreshing to me to go to a village or a township and see the good work that those folks are doing and hear about the challenges that they're faced with and, you know, try to offer whatever assistance the county can, and just really good folks who are doing their best to do the right thing down there, and it's always, it's always good to attend those meetings. We had a special Transportation Improvement District meeting last week that I was able to participate in where we formed up an agreement with a law firm to represent us and to advocate on our behalf as we dig deeper into these big projects that are coming up. We did have the One Ohio Foundation, the opiate settlement money. We had our Region Eighteen meeting last week with all seven counties that are in that region in attendance, and we are making progress as a region in, on the state board where I sit. We're months away now from sending out that first pretty good sized chunk of money to the regions to make an effort to make an impact on the opiate situation. Audience in the Township Association, again, was just really impressed by the attendance. You know, those, used to go to those Township Association meetings and they'd have five different townships represented, and they couldn't do anything because they didn't have a quorum, and, and now it's a really robust agenda. Met this morning with Mayor Scheffler, you know, he's continuing his efforts to find ways to build workforce housing and affordable housing here in the city, partnering with him and introducing him to different folks who have an interest in doing that and just really, I appreciate David Scheffler. I think he's done a really nice job as the mayor of Lancaster, and he'll be missed. You know, I know Don McDaniel is said to be the next mayor, and I think he'll do a wonderful job, but Dave Scheffler has changed Lancaster for the better, and I really appreciate him. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Anything else under Old Business? Dr. Brown?
I'm like, from the annual comprehensive financial report is the average sales price of residential property increased from a hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two thousand thirteen to three hundred and eleven, two hundred and five in two thousand twenty-two, increase of eighty point two percent. Evaluations increased sixty-two point nine percent in the same timeframe. So they're not one for one, and it's much lower in the evaluations, but that eighty percent number, that statistic is one that's drawn attention from realtors when I talk to them and others that are a little startled by that increase in that average sales price. That's average.
Thank you, Dr. Brown.
I have another statistic that's just a really good one from the.
Do tell.
Software as a service that we're doing with the County Auditor's Office, it's all completed, but we were going to track how many times the system was down, and in the first quarter of two thousand twenty-two, without SaaS, it was down ten times, and in the first quarter of two thousand twenty-three, it was down once, and it was only for an hour. So that's a markedly good outcome for that type of project, and just wanted to mention that particular statistic.
Thank you. Just one item under Old Business, as my colleagues are probably aware, Fairfield County Parks, formerly known as Fairfield County Historic Parks, which folks may or may not understand or appreciate, but that is a separate political subdivision from the county operated by a different board than we. But quite some number of years ago, the Commissioners donated a house to serve as an office for their operations. They're interested in making other plans for their office arrangements, and they did contact the county and see if and under what circumstances we would like them to return the donated house to the county. I just want my colleagues to know that I had a very productive conversation with President Faco of their board regarding those terms and conditions, and their board will meet on May eighth, and I, I'm encouraged by that conversation. That's certainly not the same as their board meeting and discussing those potential terms and conditions, but I hope to have a conclusion to that discussion in the near term. Under New Business, Commissioner Levy?
So tomorrow, I have the opportunity to, to attend the Governor's Workforce, I'm a member of the Governor's Workforce Board, and will be meeting, meeting at Miracle Grove on, on, in, on thirty-three, I always want to say north of Columbus, but it's actually west of Columbus. And what's, what's, you know, and I'm really engaged with workforce as well as Rick Sabrak, and within the House budget, we have a four point two eight billion budget request, which the House has included in. Now it goes to the Senate and then hopefully goes through that process and then to the Governor's desk, and we'll have that money to be able to expand some of the programs at, at the Workforce Center, which I think is a good day, Rick.
Mr. Fix, anything additional under New Business?
Yeah, so Commissioner Levy, she gets to go hang out with the governor. I get to go to Amanda in Thurston tomorrow night.
Beautiful place.
Yes, tomorrow night I'll be in Thurston. They're working on their development plan, land use plan, growth plan, and Anthony and I Chaney from our force in regional, Workforce and Economic Development Group went there meeting, I believe, and we can go Saturday, and was very impactful, and they very much appreciated that. So we're just, again, continuing the conversation around the county, helping people in any way we can move forward. This afternoon, I have a meeting with Eastland Joint Vocational School Operations Director. It's a continuing conversation that Rick and I started a month or so ago. They'll have new leadership here in the near future, but they're expressing an interest in strengthening the partnership with our workforce development program, so it's always a positive thing.
And if I could comment on that, that's come a long way. Yeah. Because initially, that was not the case. Congratulations, Rick, and yeah, you've worked there.
We'll see what the results are.
Speaking under New Business, I'm happy to have been invited by all of, I guess, the leadership and staff of Soil and Water Conservation Districts throughout Ohio. They've asked me to speak to their organization next week, next Thursday. Their 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 topic that they asked me to speak to is interesting a little bit to me, they're this Thursday. Yeah, thanks, I. They wanted to kind of understand more about county finances and county budgeting and kind of what some of the considerations and parameters are. And I think with an eye towards kind of better understanding how soil and water conservation requests, what are they funneling into? What system of analysis and protocols are they are they funneling into when they ask, say, for example, a county commission for for funding or something like that? So I'm, you know, of course, I accept all speaking engagements, so not a terrible shock there. But I'm looking forward to making that presentation and to to having some good conversation with all of the soil and water districts throughout Ohio this coming Thursday, it's this Thursday. If you said next week, you were wrong about that. New Business, Treasurer Botson, how are you doing?
Doing fine, thank you.
Good, anything you want to share? All right.
Reset it, pardon, thank you.
Lisa, anything from you? No good, Dr. Brown?
This past week, I was part of the Civics Bee contest at the Chamber sponsored, it was very rewarding and encouraging to see the youth participating in things, to show their knowledge of the Bill of Rights, the Constitution, how they would solve problems in the community. Very encouraging. And from that, I'm actually going to be doing Jeopardy games in lower grades to help them prepare for some of the civics contests that are coming up sponsored by the Chamber.
Now Steve might show up to one of those because he actually wants to win one of your Jeopardy games.
Well, we'll have some new, I think you share with that.
I I do play Jeopardy every night and I do lose, I I get like six questions right out of forty.
We're doing this one for the third grader, so all of us in the room should be okay. They're smart kids, they're smart kids.
My wife tells me about some kindergarten things she's teaching and I'm thinking, oh crap, I have no idea how to do that.
You remember the show up, you're smarter than a what, a fourth grader?
Fifth grader, yes, I do.
And I'd listen to some of those questions, it's like, oh, big bad.
Think we've embarrassed ourselves enough for the moment. Any other issue or item right now? Well, Ben, if you would please, why don't we go up?
As if you're able, join us in the pledge of allegiance. The red flag is, it's too little, too high, I think, I mean, I could say it's a prayer. Too little, too high, which stands, well, I may machine, I don't remember that, I've been in this little, we could click to see, you know, so that's a
Thank you. Now, do we have any announcements?
We do not.
We'll have the approval minutes for April twenty five, twenty twenty three.
Sent, second.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levysey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Minutes pass three zero from the Commissioners Office, Resolution twenty twenty three dash five dot two dot A. A resolution to approve and authorize use of American Rescue Plan Fiscal Recovery Funding and appropriate from unappropriated funds for the County ARP Fiscal Recovery Fund, number twenty eight seventy six for United Way in conjunction with Dolly Parton's Imagination Library.
Commissioners, move items A and B. Second.
Discussion.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levysey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion's pass three zero from Fairfield County Engineer, Resolution twenty twenty three dash five dot two dot C. A resolution to approve the contract with Russell Standard Corporation for the twenty twenty three Crack Ceiling Project.
Under Fairfield County Engineer, move item C and D. Second.
Discussion.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levysey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion's pass three zero from Fairfield County Facilities, Resolution twenty twenty three dash five dot two dot E. A resolution authorizing the purchase of a twenty twenty two Dodge Ram two five hundred from Key CJDR Toby Auto Group for a total cost of fifty eight thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars.
Sent, second.
Discussion.
Certainly don't like the cost of trucks these days, but we did need this and it was planned in our budget for this last year.
Soon that was under some form of state contract.
It's a little, we beat the price, state.
So that auto group, where are they located?
Xenia.
Xenia.
We've actually purchased from them before in the past, I don't know who did, but they were already in the system.
I got to tell you a funny story about Xenia, my great grandma was in Xenia for the tornado way back in the day, right? And her story is that she was having lunch at a restaurant in Xenia when the tornado came through and the glass front of the store snapped and came in and in her words, Kyra Army. And and I love my great grandma, but it's kind of funny because as you tell them, it's no racing, wait in our army. That's supposed to be gold. And they got cut off, Grandma.
So that's where you get your hyperbole from.
Please call.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levysey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero from Fairfield County Regional Planning Commission. Resolution twenty twenty three dash five dot two dot F. A resolution to establish a drainage maintenance district for the Metamor Reserve Section Two Phase One subdivision.
Sent, second.
Discussion.
So years ago, we had talked about Carrie, you you and I had, and I think we talked about it in some bigger terms about these individual drainage districts and how painful they can become over time. And did we ever go anywhere down the road of creating a countywide drainage district?
Jeremiah is in the process of researching that, has made some progress and we expect that we'll have more information about that relatively soon.
Good, thank you.
Commissioner, we're working with a contractor now to actually start to put this plant together, so we have to have something ready for you soon.
Thank you, Ben.
Further discussion?
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levysey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero from Fairfield County Utilities Department. Resolution twenty twenty three dash five dot two dot G. A resolution to approve memo transactions for reimbursement for sheriff costs for the fire alarm annual inspection.
Sent, second.
Discussion.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levysey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Resolution passes three zero. On payment of bills for Resolution twenty twenty three dash five dot two dot H. A resolution authorizing the approval of payment of invoices for departments that need Board of Commissioners approval.
Sent, second.
Discussion.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levysey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero, the next regular meeting is scheduled for May ninth at nine AM in this room.
Any other issue or items, we would like to bring your attention to the Commission's staff. Eric, no, no, accept the motion.
So move to adjourn.
Second, I got to go during the second all those papers about saying I.
I oppose same sign. The motion carries, the Commission is adjourned, we thank you all.